So it's your introductions.
Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the February 19th, 2025 regular meeting of the Kenai City Council Order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening and ask if you are able to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dotte?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Here.
Councilmember Daniel?
Here.
Councilmember Sonar?
Here.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Councilmember Cassena?
Here.
Student Representative Tanner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Council, next up, we have approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Pleasure, Council. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the agenda and the consent agenda and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody that would like to amend the consent agenda or agenda this time? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of February 5th, 2025, brought to you by the city clerk. New business, action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. Action approval, first extension to the agreement with Guardian Security Systems, Inc., for security guard services at Kenai Municipal Airport, brought to you by the administration. Action approval, council confirmation of mayoral nomination of Gina Kuntzman to the Council on Aging Commission, brought to you by Mayor Gabriel. Introduction of ordinance number 3451, 2025, accepting and appropriating donations to the Kenai Community Library for library materials, equipment, furniture, and programming, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing scheduled for March 5th, 2025. Introduction of ordinance number 3452, 2025, accepting and appropriating a polar bear and brown bear taxidermy donation from the Warren E. Johnson Estate for display in the Kenai Municipal Airport Terminal, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing on March 5th, 2025. Introduction of ordinance number 3453, 2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code, Chapter 7.15, purchases and sales, Section 7.15060, procurement of professional services, and 7.15.070, innovative procurement and other exceptions to allow insurance coverage to be purchased by direct negotiation and authorize other procurement exceptions subject to city council approval by resolution, brought to you by Vice Mayor Naxted. Public hearing on March 5th, 2025. Introduction of ordinance number 3454, 2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code, 2335032, arbitration panel to amend the member terms from indefinite terms to three-year terms, brought to you by the city clerk. Public hearing on March 5th, 2025. An introduction of ordinance number 3455, 2025, authorizing the purchase of a used Ventrac tractor and attachments from KNC Golf, Inc., that deviates from procurement procedures authorized by Kenai Municipal Code, Chapter 7.15, purchases and sales, brought to you by the administration. Public hearing on March 5th, 2025. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to comment on the consent agenda, which was just right in the record? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, we'll bring it back to council. United States Consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. This evening, we have no scheduled administrative reports. Under item C, Schedule Public Comment, we do have Project Homeless Connect 2025, Executive Director of Love, Inc., Leslie Rohr. Mr. Rohr, you have the floor. And you can just turn the... There should be a button on your microphone.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for allowing us to come and present to you tonight. This year's event was, I think, very good. Not just very good. We had 32 vendors, so the amount of services that were available at this event were more than we have ever had before. So if you want to... Here. And our purpose is to connect the people with the services efficiently and making sure that they have access to the resources that they need and to build a more compassionate community. And that's one of the things that we heard a lot this time was people felt respected, they felt like they were being treated with dignity, and that's our goal. And our organizational chart, the Kenai Peninsula Continuum of Care is kind of the overarching umbrella over the Kenai Peninsula Homelessness Coalition and the Project Homeless Connect Committee. We also are over the cold weather shelter and working on long-term housing, and we are responsible for doing the point-in-time count, which is required by HUD that we do once a year. And here's just a look at some of the vendors that were there. And haircuts were probably one of the top things that we did. So this year's numbers were down slightly. We had an actual count of 116 people who filled out the intake form, and they represented family members of 185. And it's down just a little bit from last year. But again, we are seeing more females than males, and people with disabilities continues to be a high number for us. As far as where people are living, more people are living with friends and family. Emergency shelter, you can see for the past three years, has been pretty stable, part of that being because we now have the Nikiski Shelter of Hope. And then, but those living in places not meant for human habitation was higher this year, and that's something that we really want to address. And as usual, the reasons for homelessness vary greatly. Loss of jobs, domestic violence, but the top, the other category encompasses a lot of things, a loss of income, an accident or injury, eviction, divorce. There's any number of things that come under that category. What this shows us is first-time attendees, and did they find the services helpful, and were they treated with respect? So I think we did a good job. So the point in time is the one night that we ask people, where did you sleep the night before? And that date is always chosen by HUD, and it's used across the country, and we all ask the same question, where did you sleep last night? And those numbers are fed into the database nationwide to count homelessness. It's hard. It's hard when you see 115 people come through, and we know from experience that there's at least three to four times that many people on the peninsula that were not counted that day. So there's... This slide is interesting to me. First-time attenders, the first-time homeless, 33% of the people that attended the event. And those who have experienced two or three times of homelessness was 21%, and four or more episodes was 29%. And 75% said they would use an emergency shelter if it were available. We've kind of had the same answer for the past four years that we've been asking that question. Some of the primary needs that we're seeing this year, there was a lot of food insecurity, more requests for clothing, more interest in employment possibilities, and their secondary needs are transportation, utility assistance, and vehicle repairs. I think the one that didn't make it on here that probably should have is the lack of affordable housing. So we were privileged to have a veterinarian from Saldana Animal Hospital that came and spent several hours with us. He was able to do some well checks and vaccinations. People were excited to be able to have their pets seen on the day of the event. So, and they gave, they did 11 vaccinations. They also made contact with more people who will bring their dogs in for treatment at a later point. 115 participated. Forty-nine percent say this was their first Homeless Connect event. And there's, I think that there is, 12% slept in the car the night before, and that's, that's really hard to see. And 37% have been homeless for a year or more. Fifty percent report the last permanent address was in the, in Kenai, and we see that across the board with our services through Love, Inc. About 42% to 48% of our clients are from Kenai area. This is what it costs, this is, this is what it takes for someone to be able to afford to pay rent. So our minimum wage is $11.73 now, what, going up in July. The average renter wage is $23.35. That usually includes working, two working adults or one person working more than one job. The average cost of renting, is, does she have that? Is about $1,488. And so for somebody to be able to afford a two-bedroom rental, they would need to be making $28.61 an hour, and 24% of our population are renters. And then the, the last one is the housing costs, the median income across the peninsula. And then the Shelter of Hope. We have been open since December of 2021. Our cumulative numbers are, we've had 228 adults, 59 children, 36 pets, 54,000 meals, and 18,652 bed nights. We currently have 16 adults, two children, and three pets in-house, and we have four more people going in tomorrow and Friday. So we'll be at our 22-bed capacity very quickly again. And we just want to thank everybody who participated and, and supported this event. I especially thank the city of Kenai for your line item contribution to us every year. That is helpful for us to know we have the city of Kenai supporting us. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Rohr? Councilmember Dotte?
Do you have any data on how the men's shelter is doing out there? Do you have data on that one, on what their capacity is right now or how they're doing?
Right. So the Friendship Mission has 12-bed capacity, and they run about 10 gentlemen most of the time. And for their shelter, the men need to be capable of seeking employment. And then, you know, they have their, they are zero tolerance for drugs and alcohol as well.
Thank you. Is that the, besides the shelter in Nikiski and then that, is that really the, are there any other shelters or?
The only other shelters on the peninsula are the Lee Shore Center and Haven House in Homer. Those are both domestic violence, sexual assault, and so they are geared to a very specific audience.
Thank you.
Sure.
Further questions? Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. First of all, thank you for coming to present tonight. This is a topic that is, you know, on a lot of people's minds all over the U.S. and the world. This data here you presented is very, very interesting and concerning, too, is it sounds like there's a lot of work being done, but there's still more to be, to be done. And I guess my question is a couple of things. One, any idea, I mean, you see like 50% approximately from Kenai. Is there any particular reason for that or another, or just it's an interesting data point?
There you go. Yeah. I'm not sure. We have, we have seen that historically throughout the years, that, that more of the shelter insecure have been in the Kenai, North Kenai area. Then there are pockets, and I think one of the reasons they, there are pockets in like Sterling, Casiloff, Clam Gulch. So that kind of spreads out some of the other areas, so Saldana doesn't get quite as high a number as Kenai does, or a little more compact.
Thank you. That makes sense. And a follow-on, from the city's perspective, what can the city do to help? Like, what, I mean, if any municipality, either city of Kenai, city of Slavana, how do we help these populations better?
Yeah, that's a really tough one. Grants pass kind of set precedent in their legislate, or their lawsuit to criminalize sleeping in the park. So many cities across the country are making it illegal for, for people to sleep outside. And what we see happening is that creates two things. It creates more barriers for people when they're trying to get off the street and into housing, and it pushes people further into the woods.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yeah, thank you for coming and, and the presentation, and the numbers are always, always astounding, and I can't always make sense of it. And, because I know what I see, and I do sort of have a question, and it's just the, the number of women that came in was, I think it was 54%. It was better than 50%. And that's another surprise to me. And it's a surprise to me, just being part of the public here, you know, when I see what I think are homeless people, they're usually men, you know, in different various places here or in Saldana. And so that's why it surprises me, but can you kind of explain why that statistic might be so high and maybe why the most common people aren't necessarily seeing it?
Because it's an invisible population. This is a population that works really hard at not being seen, unlike the, the few that you see around town with signs and are out in the open, panhandling and such. They're the minority. Most of our homeless population, many of them are employed. It's, you know, the checker at the grocery store, the waitress at the restaurant, and they, they try really hard to not let people know that they are homeless. And I, I think that's, it's really sad on our part, that we're not more observant because, you know, their, their kids are with our children in school, and they're sitting next to us in church. We need to wake up.
Councilmember Dotte?
I would, it's a little bit of a, a good note on this fact, but I can't remember the number of units, but I know we have commitment now that they are going to be building some low-income housing units on readout. So the city was able to donate land, and that sounds like that's moving forward. I don't know the exact numbers, but several units can be moving forward on that.
Yes, and I, I just want to stress that for anybody that is connected with the development end and, and construction, that Alaska Housing Finance has funding available for affordable housing, and there's several different programs that they will contribute to up to $100,000 per unit for some of them. So there are incentives to build, and if we can just get people to do it.
Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. One more follow-up question, not so much from the city's perspective, but how can individuals, if they're seeking assistance or help? I know this is a once-a-year, I believe, event, but how can people seek help outside of that once-a-year event?
Exactly. So Love, Inc. is kind of the central intake for the peninsula. We service the entire Kenai Peninsula borough with our Alaska Housing Finance grant. We also do social services for veteran families grant, or supportive services. And working closely with everybody that's in the continuum of care, referrals come to our office for people who are seeking housing, either prevention services to keep them from being homeless or placement services if they are already homeless. So we process over 300 families a year through, through our office.
Thank you.
I have a few, a few questions. Just on your, you know, how you collate the, the residency, it says zip code of last permanent address, right? So that's how you enumerate that. But if they're, if, that doesn't necessarily mean they're homeless in Kenai. Is that, would that be a fair statement? I mean, that was their last known address. So are they, is it some sort of transient or?
They're, they usually stick around where their last permanent zip code was because that's how, if they get general delivery for mail, they have to be close by because it's only held for a certain amount of time, and just familiarity with the area. So they, they generally congregate where they have lived.
The other thing I was going to ask is, this, this has been a pretty mild winter for our standards. Would that, did that, would that have skewed the numbers?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then one final question I have, and, and I know, I appreciate you, and I want to recognize Ms. Council and the audience as well, that come and, and give us the, the data that you guys collect from this every year. But would it be possible to do like a three-year, like at least a look back so we can do comparative? Because I know on some of us, on some of this, we do, at least on the handout that I've got, it's, it's a little easier for me. And the reason I said that is that it seems to me we have, like this year you had 115. I know some years it's been like 130, 150, and it seems like every year like 50% are first time. So was, would that be accurate, that like, we're getting like 50% are the new group every year?
Yeah. That would probably be, it would be close to that. And if you look back through the graphs here, it does show clear back to 2012 on, on most of them, go back 2012 through, all the way through 2025.
We didn't get that one.
Pardon?
We didn't get that on our handout, so.
Ooh. I can make that available for you.
That would be, that would be wonderful if you could, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, I thought I'd seen that one. But anyway, that's, it's just easier for me to, you know, to sort of wrap my brain around what I can look at.
Right, yeah. And it, and it is helpful when you can look at and, and see, you know, 10, 12 years.
My eyes are failing a little bit, so I couldn't quite get all.
Mine, too.
Any further questions?
Where was this held?
It was held at the Sports Center, and, and we are excited to next year be able to move over to the Field House, so we'll have more room. We won't be as tight in, in that space. I think Kathy, Kathy does our layout for the event, and we couldn't have put, we couldn't have put another vendor in there. And so next year, we'll be able to maybe add some and spread out a little bit more.
With, with that follow-up, with the majority of the residents being from the Kenai area, has there been talk about trying to do one in the Kenai area that might help with transportation issues or?
So we, we have had several of the events in Kenai in the early days, but we have outgrown any space that's available in Kenai. And as far as transportation to the event, we work with Alaska Cab and with carts, and they both provided free transportation to the event for people.
Any further questions? Well, thank you for the, it's very helpful for us to, you know, look at this and track the data and sort of understand where, where this is going. And certainly, your efforts are applauded in the community. Honestly, I would like a year where we don't see you guys. I'd love to see you guys out of a job, and I know that sounds kind of mean, but you'd probably almost agree, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor on item D, unscheduled public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or the consent agenda? See none, we'll go to public hearings. Item E1, ordinance number 3449-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the General Fund Police Department and accepting grants from the United States Department of Justice, Alaska Municipal League, Joint Insurance Association for the purchase of ballistic vests. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to an act ordinance 3449-2025. Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3449-2025? Seeing nobody in chamber or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation, council? Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Chief Ross and staff, whoever, you know, for getting the grant and for these needed vests. And they are pretty expensive. So it's much graded, greatly appreciated. I do have a general question about the vests and that. I was just wondering how, what their life expectancy? How long can you continue to use them? I think you wear them all the time.
Chief Ross.
Counselor nexted through the, through the mayor. Five years is pretty much the life expectancy of the vest. So that's our replacement cycle is five years.
Further discussion on ordinance number 3449-2025? Seeing none, Clark, please call her on.
Councilmember Askin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Axted.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar.
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel.
Yes.
Councilmember Kasena.
Yes.
Councilmember Daughtry.
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner.
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3449-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Councilor on item E2, ordinance number 3450-2025, amending sections of Kenai Municipal Code Title 23, Personnel Regulations, Sections 23.01, 05.070, Definitions 23.25.080, Promotions 23.30.030, Probationary Period for Employees in the Classified Service, and 23.55.020, Compensation Structure by Grade for Employees in the Classified Service to Ensure Consistent Approach to Pay Adjustments for City Employees. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor, next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to an act ordinance 3450-2025. Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 3450-2025? Seeing nobody in chambers or line, we'll bring it back to council. I guess we're probably going to get requested of this sort of administration. I see we have Ms. Randall here as well. So could you give us a little overview here, Mr. Yubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So if council recalls, July 1 of this year, the city adopted a number of changes to our personnel structure related to the compensation and classification study that we completed last year. Most of the changes that are being requested through this ordinance are, you know, as we've, as we've implemented that study and those code changes, we found some things that aren't working exactly well or we overlooked in the amendment of code at that time. Some examples of that, and I'm definitely going to let Stephanie chime in on a lot of these particulars here. But one of the things that we did at that time was we changed the employee probationary period for all city employees from six months to one year. Now, in the past, our public safety employees, both police and fire, had a one year probationary period. And all other employees had a six month probationary period. July 1, we fixed that, or we changed that so everybody has a one year probationary period. Now, the issue with that is that another provision of code indicated that after completion of probation, an employee was eligible for a step increase. We're not changing that. We're removing that provision from code because it's no longer applicable since an employee after one year is also eligible, that has a satisfactory performance evaluation, is also eligible for a step increase. So the same function is being performed. Another issue that we noted is that if council recalls, we have a number of steps in our classification plan that employees receive a step increase annually for first five, maybe seven steps. And then the remaining steps in our salary schedule happen every other year. They used to be valued all the same. They were the same percentage increase, no matter which step you were in. With that classification study, we increased the value or the percent change of our double steps effective July 1. The inconsistency that we now have is that when a person is promoted, the promotion code reads that they're entitled to a one step increase. So depending on where you're at in the salary schedule, if you're in the single letter steps, your salary, your increase for that promotion is less than if you're in the double steps. So what we've done is we've classified this now saying that the minimum increase an employee will see is 4% when being promoted. That's going to create consistency. So all employees are, a promotion will generate the same amount of pay increase for an employee that receives a promotion along the way. And, man, Stephanie, did I miss anything?
I believe you covered, thank you, Mr. Yubank, through the mayor. I believe you covered all the main points there. The one you maybe didn't, I think you mentioned the anniversary date. We wanted to clarify what was defined as the anniversary date because it was changing with promotions and different things. We wanted to standardize that to just simplify our calculations when we're doing years of service and annual leave eligibility and scheduled, the scheduled pay increases. So that was, I think, the one, I'm not sure you mentioned.
Any questions from council? Deliberations? Councilmember Daughtry.
I just want to say thank you for the city staff for doing this. It's great to see us working forward to try to keep and maintain our employees that are important and make sure everybody's receiving a fair pay. So thank you for doing this.
Vice Mayor Axted.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to chime in that I support the ordinance and that it's, some of it's kind of, it's neutral and a lot of it is beneficial to the employees. And I see it to be all a good thing.
Further discussion? Clark, please call her on.
Vice Mayor Axted.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sonar.
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel.
Yes.
Councilmember Kasena.
Yes.
Councilmember Daughtry.
Yes.
Councilmember Askin.
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner.
Yes.
You have seven yes votes. Ordinance number 3450-2025 is enacted.
Thank you, Madam Clark. We're on item E3, Resolution Number 2025-15, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease of airport reserve lands between the City of Kenai and ENA, limited liability corporations for lots 5A and 5B, FBO subdivision number 10, to be described as Lot 5C, FBO subdivision 2024 addition upon approval of final plan. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Axted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2025-15.
One second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2025-15? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Vice Mayor Axted.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this. And yet, the company that is asking for the lease has been on our airport for quite some time. And I know they've been kind of circling, wanting to build a hangar down there at some point. And now they're looking to pull the trigger and actually do a development and a tank farm and all of that. And I think that it's good for the airport. And I certainly support this and request unanimous consent.
Thank you, further comments? Councilmember Kasena.
Thank you. Just a small question. I don't know if it's appropriate here. But on page 18 of the packet, it looks like the name of the applicant is ENELLC rather than ENA. And I don't know if that needs to be modified before proceeding with the lease.
Yeah, because it says name to appear on the lease as ENELLC, just hold on. Would that be a?
That can be classified as a technical amendment. We'll get the name correct on the final documentation.
All right, thank you.
Good catch. Further discussion? I guess I would have, my, my only question is a timeline here. Mr. Yubank, did you have an estimated timeline for completion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the lease provides three years to complete development. Code does have provisions in there for, I believe, two one year extensions. But they have to meet certain criteria and definitely be active in the development. So this will give them a three year term initially to complete the construction. They're required to complete a construction of at least $3 million in a hangar and tank farm, so.
And then one follow up, this, would they vacate the area they're in, currently occupying on the apron?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do believe that once their construction is complete that they would vacate, would no longer lease that apron space from us, that they would occupy their lease lot.
Okay, very good. Further discussion? Would unanimous consent be requested? Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, resolution number 2025-15 is adopted. That brings us to item H9, under New Business Action Approval, authorizing the city manager to modify the agreement with the Kenai Peninsula Borough for accepting landfill leachate at the wastewater treatment plant. So we're going to entertain a motion to approve. Vice Mayor Axted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve that the, or recommend that the manager modify the agreement with the Kenai Peninsula Borough for a leachate. Requesting unanimous consent.
Any discussion on the motion? Unanimous consent was requested, is there an objection? Seeing none, so moved. Under discussion action, we have digester blower standardization. Sounds like a pretty sexy topic here. So I'll just open the floor to administration, I guess, and see how they want to kick this up. This is just discussion action, right? Would we need a motion as well?
The discussion on this can be opened first. And then as the motion is formulated, it can be made at that point.
I think we're looking for a direction, is that correct, Mr. Yubank?
I think actually we would be looking for a motion to authorize standardization.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Axted, or Vice Mayor Axted, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to support the standardization of the digester blowers at the wastewater treatment facility.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Mr. Yubank, you want to give us a little overview there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And if we need to get into any specifics, Public Works Director Frye is here, he can dive into that. But our digester blower project is a project down at the sewer treatment plant to replace some blower units down there. These blower units will result in significant energy savings to the city once they are replaced. We received a grant, I believe it was a direct congressional appropriation, for 2.9 million for the project. Now, that project includes the equipment, these new blowers, construction of a building, reworking a whole bunch of piping, probably tearing some old stuff out, quite a bit of work. The estimated cost of these blowers themselves is about half a million dollars, so about one-sixth of the total project. We currently previously did a project to replace some blowers in our facility. And what we've asked the EPA is if we could designate in our bid document the blowers that we require to be used in the project. They're the same blowers we currently have in our facility. It creates a lot of standardization for us. And we believe it's in our best interest to standardize. We have one type of piece of equipment in there. We have, only have to maintain one set of parts. We only have to train people on the operations of one type of blowers. They have concurred so far with that request. And they've approved our bid document with that standardization. The provision of code, if we do standardize, these blowers are only permitted or only can be bought from one manufacturer. And because, like I said, this is a half a million dollar purchase, that basically we're creating the standardization for. We wanted council's concurrence before we designate that in our, in our bid document. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. Did I miss anything?
Councilmember Daughtry.
Coming from somebody who has a lot of equipment, I can reiterate the standardization of having the same equipment that takes the same parts, especially in today's lack of parts environment and difficulty to get items. It's much easier to be able to keep stuff on the shelf that you know is known issues or repaired issues for maintenance when you have one item. So I can see this as being a very, very good idea. Much in support of standardization. One other thing, speaking of this, is it seems like we have a lot of projects going on over at the wastewater treatment facility. It might be kind of interesting, I don't know if we could do it, but maybe set up some type of a tour for council to be able to see what the projects are and kind of get an idea of what this whole building would be. Might be another idea too, since we have a lot of projects seem like going on over there. Just a thought.
Further discussion? Council, Vice Mayor Axted.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do support the standardization of the blowers for the reasons stated. But it's, it's pretty common within the city to have some standardization. And we have water valves that are standardized, the fire hydrants are standardized, a lot of the pumps for the water. I believe in our lift station, those pumps are probably also standardized. There's other equipment. And it just kind of makes the whole system work. Otherwise, you know, we're just talking about blowers here. But, you know, if you are maintenance of these facilities and you've got various types and parts all over the place, it would be a nightmare. And this would create even more of one if we didn't standardize, I think, in this case. And it sounds like it's, it's what we want. And it's a proven, proven piece of equipment. So definitely support it.
Further discussion? Yeah, I just want to echo that too. As far as our critical infrastructure, I think it is important that we have equipment that we only are able to get good parts. When you look at, when I went through the included specifications of this particular brand in the packet, it seems like it's a pretty impressive quality unit that we're getting here. And certainly in those critical elements that we have within our infrastructure, I think it's important that we're able to react to that. Maybe you're going to pay a little bit more upfront. But at the end of the day, we have people, equipment that's familiar to our employees, but also the parts available, so. I think unanimous consent was requested, is there an objection? Seeing none, that is approved. Next up, under H11, we have grants to other agencies, annual reports. Councilmember Daughtry.
Thank you. So I'm not going to read the exact quote that's in there. But basically, this is just a discussion item about the possibility of our line item grants that the council is in charge of to agencies, kind of like Love Inc., you know, making it standardized that everybody that's on that list that's receiving money from us on an annual basis to council would need to come give us a set standardized report on what they're doing each year, making sure. You know, this can make it to where, you know, are they still in business even? We don't know unless we get a report of some kind. So this just gives us something on, in the, on the books that would say, you know, come to us. And they can do it. I think the best way to do it personally would be to do it just like they did. And that's just before the every meeting, if by the end of the year, they need to give us a report requesting that they would want the funds again and what they're using them for. I'm more than willing to sit down with another person or staff and come up with a rough draft on what we might want for a layout. You know, put it, put it down. And these are the bullet points that we'd like to see in the draft or in the presentation. But it's just establishing something that gives us some kind of report of what our funds are going to. Because some of these things, most of them actually Because some of these things, most of them actually were all authorized and put into play by councils that most of us aren't even here anymore or aren't, are new. And we're just reauthorizing these same funds over and over again, but we don't even know if they are utilized for, or what they're doing with it, or if they're in business still. I mean, these are all kinds of things that come up to mind of why having some kind of a, a report annually would be good to have it on paper for me. And that's, that's where this came from.
So what, I guess, what's your ask, Councilman Dothan, that, is it? Just to be clear, I, go ahead.
Just to require an annual report.
Okay.
I know an ID on here was also an application for it, but at least, and staff brought up that that might become some having a, it might be more paperwork for them and more processed, but at least if we got, they come and do a presentation annually before we authorize the funds automatically into our budget. And we could adjust those fund levels, too, based on that report if we'd like to, but at least anybody on that list would have to do an annual report, and we can set a black and white form with, you know, I'm coming up with an idea of, you know, bullet points, what would be required in this report, so we get at least the same information from everybody is required. They could give us more, but at least certain items would be required for that report.
Would this be something that you would request a certain time, like, like prior to budget, or I guess?
Yeah, I would say, you know, in the last quarter of the year, prior to our budget being finalized.
Okay. Further discussion, vice mayor next.
Yeah, I want to thank council member Dothan for bringing that forward. I think it's a really good idea, but within, within that framework, I mean, actually, I've got a copy of our, of our budget because I was kind of curious what all those were and kind of need reminding. Some of them are already well-defined and how that might work. If I may, you know, like the Peninsula Oilers Water and Sewer, that is a donation for that. I mean, it's, I don't know what, that's what we do.
Speaking of that, real quick.
The Kenai Historical Society, that is for a specific, specific thing. It wouldn't hurt for them to tell us that, you know, that they're in fact using that. That's, that's just fine. The, let's see, I think that there's some other things in here. The Boys and Girls Club, some money goes toward them, and that really is for a particular purpose that I don't think is exactly noted in here. And I think that it's good for, to remind them what that money was for, too, because I don't know that it's, you know, as time goes on, people forget. It looks like just a donation. But anyway, I think that there's a, some of it might not be something that would normally be by some of these organizations reported on annually necessarily.
And to speak on that, I think, like, the Oilers is a prime example. They've announced they're not even playing this year, so do they need the water and sewer? Are they going to be operating out of that facility? Could they use funds for something else instead of a water sewer donation if they're not? I mean, these are the kind of things that could come forth in a report that I see. And like Boys and Girls Club, what are those funds for? You know, the Historical Society, what, and it might not be exactly for the funds earmarked, but what are you guys doing? And this would be their time to also maybe come forth and ask for, for different types of funds or more funds to give us an idea of what their needs are. Because a lot of these things, like, if it is earmarked, I just see a line item, and I don't know what the original ask was for, and it's just been asked and just, you know, oh, here it is, we're just going to cut this check. But I don't know what it's for, or what they're using it for, or what its original purpose was, or what their needs as an organization are now. And so that's why I think having something, you know, a standard, you know, four or five bullet points is what's a baseline for their report. You know, some of that could be, what is your organization up to these days? Or, you know, something like that, that basically gives an overview of what your organization does, and then, you know, funds and that kind of stuff. And we can come up with a, a rough draft, I think would be the best way, would come up with a rough draft, hit some of those bullet points I could get with staff, and then bring it before council for approval, and then we can modify it once we have something on paper. But this was just to start that conversation. If we think that we want to move forward with this, then I would think the direction would be, you know, I could have a meeting with staff, and we can write up some kind of a, a rough draft to move forward with it.
I don't have any, I don't have any objection to that. I think that's, you know, we, you know, we've had them come to, at times, I think prior, prior to you being on council, where folks would show up from the Historical Society and, and, yeah, at the budget meeting we have on, on Saturday. But I guess, just looking for, just a question to administration, is this something that you see that could be fleshed out pretty easily and, and followed through on, or is there something we're not, or overlooking? Mr. Yubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I know I've discussed this with Shelley. I think it would be kind of a team effort between the clerk's office and the administration to, to accomplish whatever council would like us to accomplish. But I think, you know, I think if it's kept reasonable, we can absolutely administer it and, and get council what they're looking for out of the process as well.
Very good. Councilmember Dan.
I agree, we need to do something, whether it be a form or a set, these are what we're looking for, just so we have an idea, and then potentially open the door for other organizations, you know, and sort of, you know, that can get in and ask for that in a very predefined way, and then we know every year what we, what we got. So I would, too, be supportive of, of something like this, whether it be a form or a presentation, or even just something in the packet, so, just so we know what's going on.
It sounds like, does that give you enough information to move forward? Thank you.
If I could, you know, I've been on council for a long time, and the Peninsula Oilers Water and Sewer, I assume, since, since that was mentioned, you know, perhaps in the form it, it needs to explain what, what, it's going to be different for the different organizations sometimes, because some of it's going to be specific in the why. And council member Dothan mentioned, well, they're not using water and sewer, but I think that that money might actually be for the annual, just having water and sewer, whether you use it or not. I think that would be helpful to me to, to understand that. I don't know that we have that, that complete understanding, what, what that water sewer is. Is it for use, is it just because it's connected? For example.
Mr. Yubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmember next. Well, it is for the water and sewer at the ball field, the Oilers' ball field over there. So if that field is not operating this summer, we likely would not turn the water and sewer on, and then there would be no charge, so. But I, I'm not sure. I know the American Legion uses that field for some of their baseball and things like that. I don't know what the plan is this year, but this is a great example of why we need to reach out to the organizations and find out what's going on, so.
Councilmember Cassano.
Thank you. Since I'm new to council, I thought maybe the first question would be, first question I have is if someone could explain our current process, and maybe that would help provide some more information, not that I'm opposed to this idea.
Mr. Yubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Cassano. So our current process is this, these grants to other agencies by the city reside in the legislative budget of, of the city. That budget is at the purview of the city council. So when the city manager is formulating my proposed budget, my draft budget to council, the process we've utilized, you know, my entire tenure, so the last 16 years, is we start with the grants from the prior year. It's the expectation from the administration that these are council's grants. If council would like to change or amend those, that they take the action to do so. Since they're your grants, they're not grants that are being approved by the administration. So the starting point each year has just been to take what was there last year and include it. I think that's what's leading to some of the question here, is that these grants just keep continuing year after year, and there's never any report back to council about their effectiveness, or what they're being used for, or, or these other things. So that's kind of in the process. And then as, as we work through the budget process, sometimes council has then either, you know, increased grant amounts, included new grants based upon the requests they may have got, or reduced grant amounts. So all those actions have been taken, but they are in the legislative budget, which is at the purview of the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're going to get tuned up. We got a Saturday coming up, you know, you're going to learn a lot. Just set the, just set the full day aside, let me say that. Okay, I think, I think we've given administration enough information to move forward on, so with that, we'll move to commission reports. First up, we have council on aging commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice mayor, vice mayor.
Looks like you had something else.
No, I was just, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. I did want to interrupt. Council on Aging met on the 13th of February, and they didn't have, they had a work session rather than a regular meeting. And what they did is they, they, they discussed their, their 2025 work plan, and they came up with three items, health, healthy lifestyles program, emerging grant for, for training and whatnot, and enrichment. So these things will be fleshed out and then coming to us for, for approval at a, at a later date, and their next meeting is March 13th.
Thank you. Next up, we have airport commission.
Mayor, I attended that one, too. Same day, so it's real easy for me to do, not a, not a problem. The airport commission meeting met on February 13th at six here. They had three business items. One had to do with what we were discussing tonight, the lease application from ENA LLC for the hangars and fuel, and they recommended that approval. They also had a discussion item that is on our consent agenda, I believe, accepting a donation of a tax-termy polar bear and brown bear for display at the, at the terminal building. And those have been there for, since I was a kid, very long, and the estate said, basically, I understand that, you know, the city can have them, that's where they belong. And so we'll be seeing that here in a couple of weeks for us to formalize. And the last discussion item was the, the first extension of security guard's services. That was a, all recommended and approved. So their, their next meeting is also on March 13th.
Thank you. Harbor commission?
Harbor commission met on the 10th. It was actually pretty exciting to see, I think, all, all commission seats were, were filled this time, so that was nice to see. They reviewed their annual work plans and approved them for the next year, and had some general questions about that process and how, how it will work for them, so. Their next meeting is the next 10th.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Yeah, they met, they had a lot of new members, so there's a little confusion on exactly how things worked, and I think they'll work forward with streamlining things. They were reviewing their previous work plan and making plans for a new work plan on what their goals and hopes and ambitions are for their commission, and then there was some discussion about the long-term plan for Parks and Rec and how the work sessions are going to work out and the different public meetings for that. It was a pretty quick and easy meeting. This, there was a lot of confusion with the new members trying to learn how things worked and what was supposed to happen. So I think it'll get ironed out and continue to smooth along.
Very good. Planning and zoning commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The commission met on the 12th of February. The biggest issue that night was they, Mr. Clegg from Aspen Creek Construction came, and there's a lot of controversy between him and the residents on Pine and Ponderosa regarding egress and ingress and unloading of, of equipment and, and other requirements at the, at the home. They, they will continue, they're continuing to work that with our planning and zoning director. And then their only other thing was a conditional use permit for off-street parking for the Bow Bar. They don't have enough parking for the size of the building, and so they've designated some parking spots over in front of paradosos that can be used at night, and that was approved. And their next meeting is next Wednesday.
Very good, thank you. Beautification commission?
Beautification was canceled, and their next scheduled meeting is April 8th.
Good, thank you. On a report of the mayor, pretty abbreviated report, I did attend the job shadow day today at the chamber. I can't remember, this is, I've done this for quite a number of years, and I keep thinking they're going to be tired of my spiel, but then I realize it's a new class every year, so it's just the staff that gets kind of tired of it. But this year, I think we had like 120 people, I mean, there's a lot of kids there, and it was kind of, it's always neat to, it's a, it's a fun day because the kids are going to go out in the community and pair up with, you know, businesses and, and folks within the community, just to have a, spend a little bit of time to see what they do, and if it's something that interests them, anywhere from our National Guard, we have our city Stanley Fire Department and our city police, I think, was involved as well. And just to get these kids thinking as their juniors, like, maybe what they want to do with their career. And it was kind of interesting to see this, you know, the post-COVID. I always look at the kids as like the effect of COVID, and it's kind of neat to see, you know, the kids that'd be a lot more social now than I think in the last couple of years when I did it, where they sort of came out after losing that year and a half. So fun day today doing that. And then last thing I just want to mention is we'll have, start thinking about our employee evaluations coming up, I see this rattle here, so we'll be sending out, and just to put it on your radar, our, our annual evaluation surveys for you guys to fill out and send back, so that we can get those scheduled, that we usually shoot for, I think, like the May, April, first April, maybe, or something like that. We got, yeah, so we usually, so once you sent, we'll get it sent out to you guys, we get like, you give you like a couple of weeks, two or three weeks to get them back, and then we'll compile them and then schedule evaluations. So that concludes my report. With that, we'll go to city administration reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, a couple of things to report. First, I, we had another lifesaver nomination happen just this week, and I can tell you one thing, I, I hope, I hope everybody in the community never has to dial 911 and have one of these emergencies, but I'm so thankful that we have the people that we have in our community that, that provide these services. We had an elderly couple that were, their house caught on fire. I don't have all the names, the name, the number of names on this list of lifesavers is pretty impressive, but, you know, everything from our dispatchers to our police involved to our fire department. But, you know, our dispatcher was successful in convincing the couple to quit trying to put out the fire and just get out of the house. At that point, they were actually trapped in the second story of the, of the house. The husband was able, he actually jumped out of the house, but the elderly wife was in no condition to do that. Two of our police officers actually first on scene were able to convince her to get herself out of the window, and they caught her as she dropped from the second floor. I mean, just really amazing. And they, they did knock the fire down. There was some damage in the home, certainly not as extensive as it would, could have been. Fortunately, I think a, a couple of family pets were lost in the blaze, but other than that, you know, it's, like I said, it's just really amazing to see the work by, by our emergency responders, and just want to say thank you to those, to everybody over there in public safety, so. I want to give council a little bit of an update on our PERS employer portal issue. This is the issue where the city has not been able to transmit payroll data to the public employees retirement system since early November. And the state has worked, they, they now have the portal up and running. They have elected to schedule city municipalities and PERS participants out so that everybody's not trying to update all at once and crashing the system. So our scheduled upload dates are between March 20th and April 9th, so it will be almost five months before we're able to actually get our data there. We were able to transmit two of our payrolls manually. Right now, including the payroll that takes place on Friday, we have six payrolls that are unreported and unremitted, and we'll have more between now and when we're able. So I'm guessing we'll be between eight and nine payrolls that we'll be trying to catch up on. I'm very thankful that the state is stepping up and taking, I think, financial responsibility, and they do plan to compensate plan participants for the loss of earnings on, on their, their PERS contributions. So a couple of staff updates for you. Mr. James Hagar, he was our, he's our utility lead operator. He has been promoted to our utility foreman position, been working with Public Works to consolidate. We have two leads, we had a water, we had a water and sewer lead, and then we had a wastewater treatment plant lead. We're consolidating that into just a single position. There'll be two of them, but there'll be a single position, our, our water and sewer lead and wastewater lead. This is going to, it's, this is the theme we've been working through the last few years, where we're really trying to create more, rather than segregate the sewer treatment plant from the water and sewer side of, of the utility, we're trying to consolidate that for staff, so everybody gets experience working everywhere. This is just a continuation of that, so we will be recruiting for those lead positions. One will be an internal recruitment, one will be an external recruitment, we have two to fill. We're also recruiting right now for a firefighter, and believe it or not, we've started recruitment for our summer positions. Our police department, Chief Ross, has got his temporary enforcement officers out there already starting to recruit. You'll see a lot more of those recruitments, Parks and Rec, PU. and Rec, PU Fishery types start to roll out here in the not-too-distant future. A couple other things, Airport Manager Abels and I met with our consultant regarding our airline operating agreement. That agreement expires June 30th of this year. So, we're working to put together a draft new agreement that we will be getting out to. The Airport Commission will have a presentation of them, and then we'll get to the airlines for, for comment. So, that will become effective July 1. Staff met with representatives from KSRM to talk about the city's radio advertising programs and work on some ideas to improve it, and talk about how the, the benefits that we've been seeing. We've worked with the chamber. We've submitted the special use permit for the upcoming Kenai Silver Salmon Derby. This year, it's scheduled for September 9th through the 14th. Our Employee Appreciation Planning Committee selected April 25th, so please mark that on your calendar as the date for this year's event. It will be being held at the Kenai Senior Center. Ms. Randall and myself have been working quite a bit, and now we're gonna be getting finance involved. We had a number of position requests this year as part of the budget process, and some reclassification requests, and we've been working through those. And that's quite a bit of work, especially for HR, so appreciate Stephanie's work on that. And we are working with the Corps to facilitate a contractor and employee, or I'm sorry, and public meeting to talk about the Bluff Erosion Project. That, that meeting will take place in April. Right now, the project is scheduled to start construction on May 16th. It can't start prior to that, because I believe beluga, the beluga whales in the river. So, it's, but they're expecting construction starting May 16th. And I know Public Works Director's also been discussing with some of the users, heavy users on the lower river there, mostly the, the drift fleet and commercial fishermen and the canneries, about potential, you know, I don't want to use the word conflict, but potential, you know, disruption, I guess, on the lower river there with, with the barges and things like that, and their concern about making sure that the fleet is able to get in and out to, to, for their livelihood. And I know that he's been facilitating some meetings with the contractor and, and some of these groups, and we'll be reaching out. I think the mayor brought to my attention UCDA, so we had some questions. So, we'll be reaching out to UCDA and discussing that with them as well. We're a little bit on the outside looking in on that, as we don't have the contract with the contractor. It's the Corps' contract, but we certainly want to facilitate these conversations and try to minimize those impact. So, with that, I don't have anything else, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the City Manager? Vice Mayor Naxton?
I have, I have a couple. Back to the Bluff Erosion Project, we, maybe I discussed, but I, I had an interest in, you know, is kind of what I do, is documenting, taking photos. And we talked about setting up a camera on the other side of the river, or perhaps a drone every now and then. It's just, it's good to know what the bluff look like before they start. It's coming up pretty soon. And then, you know, periodically during construction, it would, it would be just good documentation for the city to have, I think. It may have some value in the future. Or, is that anything that you're, you're writing it down, but actively pursuing?
Mr. Sheebang.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Naxton, or Vice Mayor Naxton. Yes, it is something we've been looking into. I think what we were actually looking into was, last fall, I was, I was able to tour the Cooper Landing Bypass Project, and they actually are going to be installing a drone up there that is remote-controlled, flies every day at the same time, and will take footage of, of that project, and actually can create, like a time lapse. Something I wanted to see if was possible here. Our limitation here is that the entire area of our project is within the restricted zone of our airport. So, to, we can't get permitted to fly every day at the same time. We'd have to file individual permits. So, we're definitely looking, I don't think we'll be able to do an everyday flight scenario, but I think we, I know our police department, we've got a number of drone-certified folks over there, but we will definitely be getting some footage to, to document some parts of the project, for sure.
Thank you for that. I, I think that would be real valuable.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fry.
I was just gonna add, we are, the contractor is looking at doing a pre-construction survey before the Bluff project starts to kind of realign their construction. But they're also looking at doing a survey at the top of the slope, so we can kind of establish that baseline before, you know, the continued erosion goes, because we're still gonna lose more as it kind of finds its natural spot there. So, it'll kind of give us a pre-construction, see where things go from that point.
Vice Mayor Naxton?
Yeah, the, the last question I have is, is to do with the status of the bike pedestrian path on Bridge Access. We got a grant from the state, and then the state wanted, wanted to do the design. And I saw in a, in a publication that that might be happening this summer, and I'm not sure if that's, that's, that's really the schedule.
Mr. Sheebang.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Naxton, I have reached out to DOT and the project engineer, looking for updates on both that and the Kenai Spur Highway Phase Two project. I have not got a response yet. I will update council as soon as I do. I've heard a lot of the same things, I think, that you have. I just, I want to get it from the horse's mouth before I start repeating things that aren't true. So, I, I've reached out. I'm trying to get a report. But, yeah, I think we potentially could see construction start or finish on that bike path, and even on Phase Two this summer. We're hopeful, so.
Other question, Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Donovan?
You know, the, is there any talk of like a public meeting, or just like a town hall meeting to inform the public to how the project's gonna work on the bluff? As I know, I have a lot of questions. People keep asking questions, what's it gonna do, how are they gonna do it, or, you know, what's it gonna look like this summer? I don't know if they have an idea if they're gonna do one before it actually starts or not.
Mr. Sheebang.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is the meeting we're facilitating the end of April. It's likely gonna take place at the visitor center over there, and it will be open to the public. And it's to do just that, let the contractor will be there, the Corps will be there, and they can talk to all the questions that people will have and explain the, the project.
Okay, perfect. I didn't know that was open to the public, so, cool. Thanks.
Other question of the City Manager? See none, we'll go to the City Attorney, Mr. Loon.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the City Manager? Don't do it. See none, we'll go to the City Clerk, Ms. Tanner.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just a couple of things. So far, we only have one nomination for the arbitration panel. It might be that indefinite term that's intimidating people. But we'll remind the employees to, that they have an opportunity, as well as council member. And just one last reminder, that Monday, February 24th, at the Kenai Visitor Center, 5:30 PM, is our training and appreciation event. We are looking forward to seeing you. We have 30 confirmed commissioners and council members attending at this point, and a lot of people haven't RSVP'd yet. So, and that's it, available for questions.
Questions, the City Clerk? See none, we'll go to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to address the council at this time? See nobody online, or nobody in chambers? We'll go to our council comments, and let's start out with Councilmember Sonar there. It's been pretty quiet this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Very exciting. Last week, I got to tour the Hoover Dam for the first time ever. And as I was listening to the meeting tonight, and we're talking about blowers for the water waste treatment plant, I realized I've never gone through that plant. So, when someone mentioned putting together a tour for us, I thought, yeah, we need to do that. I would enjoy that. Or, okay, I'll amend the word enjoy. I would appreciate that.
I think that can be arranged. I think that's been done in the past as well. So, yeah, so we can set something up.
But thank you all, and it was good to see you all, and I look forward to getting back to Kenai.
Thank you. Councilmember Donovan?
Um, not a whole lot. It's just been abnormally warm weather, so watch out for that black ice in the mornings. It's gonna start freezing again. So, there's a few spots that have been a little bit treacherous on a couple of intersections, so watch your speeds in the mornings. Other than that, appreciate the city for getting out. It was an abnormal sight to see the city truck out filling potholes in February. I was starting to look around for roof work or something burning at my office, and I look over and I see it's the pothole truck going down the street. And I was pleasantly surprised, but definitely kind of a little shocking to see that being able to happen. But thank you for getting out there and doing that, and filling some of these holes, and doing some early maintenance on these roads. So, thank you for that. And just for Mrs., Councilmember Sonar, we miss your piano, so hopefully we'll see you soon.
Still, Representative Tanner?
A few things. For Connections Homeschool, on February the 20th and 21st is an Alieska Resort ski trip, and on March the 3rd, quarter grade reports are due. On, for Kenai Central High School, on February the 20th is a varsity cross-country skiing at Fairbanks. On February the 21st is boys and girls junior varsity and varsity basketball at Homer High School, and boys freshman basketball at Nick Hisky High School. On February the 22nd is boys and girls freshman basketball versus Homer High School, as well as girls junior varsity basketball versus Grace Christian High School, and boys varsity basketball versus Nilchuk High School. On February the 25th is boys and girls freshman and ju, junior varsity basketball at Sohigh. On the 27th is boys and girls junior varsity and varsity basketball versus Reddington High School, and the 28th is boys and girls junior varsity and varsity basketball versus Grace Christian High School. Additionally, on March the 4th is a KCHS band concert.
Thank you. Councilmember Raskin?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. On February 12th, I attended the luncheon that was put on by Amazon, soliciting local businesses to help their, wanna create a bunch of hubs. And these small businesses deliver packages for them. It's, it was pretty interesting and sounded a little daunting, because they only get like five days off in the year, and they expect the businesses to deliver by 9 o'clock every evening. So, it'll be interesting to see how many try to take that on. And watch out for the black ice. I, I ran into a fence the other day. But I felt really good, because three hours later, the plow truck went through the gates.
That's the way it always goes. Councilmember Daniel?
Oh, man, I don't think I can top that. Just, I'll reiterate thank you to our first responders. You guys had a busy, busy week, it sounds like. And apparently, watch out for the black ice.
Councilmember Casana?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the new folks who have been applying for commission roles. And this one particularly, I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with our new Council on Aging Commission's son for several years. And I would say if the apple falls, however that goes, near, something like that. There's an apple, and there's a tree, right? And they're both very similar. And if that is in fact true, I would say that we're, we're gonna have a great new commissioner on council of the aging. So, I, I think that's exciting. I'm also excited to go to next week's training. So, thank you for the clerks and administration for putting that on next week.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Naxton?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've just got a list of things that are going to happen rather than what I did the last two weeks. But I will be attending the parliamentary procedures training on Monday, and looking forward to it. And it doesn't matter how many of those you go to, you always learn something new. And so, encourage anybody that hasn't, even though, I think it was the 14th was the drop dead date, or supposedly. I'm sure Shelley could probably find some, some room for you. But, let's see. This Friday at noon, Dorothy Gray is going to be giving a talk at the, at the Chamber Building there, you know, for the display group and all that. But she's gonna be talking about Russian, the Russian church, and Russian Alaska, and whatnot. And that'll be at noon for, for about an hour. So, that'll be a, a good educational thing if you can, if you can swing it during the day. Let's see. Another thing that's going on, I'm, I'm involved with the Kenai Bronze Bear family sculpture that we're hoping to have, you know, over there by the, by the airport terminal building. And we've been fundraising and promoting it. And I'd like to thank Grand Aviation and Three Bears combined, and they're kind of together, the two companies. I'm not sure their connections, but together, they, they donated $60,000 for the project. We still have a ways to go, but it's, it's wonderful to see a couple of companies that are in our community giving back to the community. And they, they just couldn't, they just, they just thought this was such a wonderful project, that they, they wanted to provide, you know, some of the funding for that. And there will be a luncheon presentation on the Brown Bear Project on March 5th at the, at the Chamber Regular Meeting. That's what our next meeting is here, too. And then, there's also a fundraiser for, for this. And this will be also at the Chamber this, this Friday at 5:30. And it'll be, what we're calling it is a Chamber, it'll be a SIP and Paint fundraiser. The Chamber Director has made these, these fish, and it has paints there and whatnot, and you decorate the, the, the fish. But the SIP part is that there, there will be, you know, with, with the application fee, you can get a glass of wine, you know. And so, that'll be there. They have a license for that. So, that's all copesthetic. That's at 5:30 on Friday. So, the Bronze Bear thing is moving forward, and it's just another fun thing to do. Two fun things to do on Friday.
I know, I heard about this. I was gonna do this. I got other, I had other arrangements for Friday night, otherwise I would be there, but it sounds like fun. I want paint, but I'd watch other people paint.
What's the cost, Henry? What was the cost on that? Do you know?
$30.
$30?
Per person, I believe it was. With that, this evening, we have no executive session or pending items.